Good afternoon, everyone. What a pleasure to see all your smiling faces tonight. We'll all rise. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Claudell Brown to lead us in our prayer and a pledge.
(Inaudible) please. Gracious heavenly Father, our Creator, Holy Spirit our Comforter, Jesus our Savior and Redeemer, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and to serve. We pray that thy guidance in all that we do and say. Give us eyes to see good in others, a spirit to forgive and reconcile where needed, a heart to love, help, and not to hurt. Let your spirit direct our deliberations and our deeds. Order our steps in your word, that our community may be blessed and continue to prosper. We ask these in all things, in the name of Jesus our Savior and our Redeemer, in this holy season. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a song?
Yeah.
Amen.
Role call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Beckman.
Here.
Brantley.
Here.
Brown Claudell.
Brantley.
Brown Scott.
Here.
Bryan.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Compton.
Here.
Deaton.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
Gobble.
Here.
Hale.
Here.
Johnson Arthur.
There.
Johnson Barber.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Mercer.
Yeah.
Montague.
Here.
Pearson.
Here.
Teddy.
Here.
Fang.
Here.
Spearman.
Here.
Heathson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Twenty-five present.
Everybody chose to be here tonight. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of previous meeting, march eighteen? Have a motion by Commissioner Brown.
Second.
Have a second by Jeff Wall. Any discussion?
I've corrected, sir.
We have a correction?
Um, I omitted a couple of commissioners on the initial role call and on the adjournment. And I guess some of y'all read the minutes, could Commissioner call me and let me know about it? I'd like to correct that, please.
Corrected notice. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Presentation by our county mayor.
Chairman, I feel like I'm missing a great opportunity tonight. But I'm gonna say that county mayor has no...
Don't pass up the opportunity. You may never get it again. Being it's night, the chairman has no announcements or anything to discuss. We'll move on to school superintendent, Adam number five.
(Inaudible) kind of giving an update on capital projects as I've done in the volume of finance committee meetings. As you know, this year, Northside and Southside stadiums are underway. The plumbing and foundations have been poured, and hopefully soon we'll see structures to go up. We're replacing the roof this summer at East Elementary and the HBAC. The community monitor replacing roof in the Parkview Learning Center. We're also taking care of some drainage and erosion issues at North Parkville Middle School. And another thing to be mindful of is we have these older schools that we're having a requirement by the farm marshal to put in more outlets for electrical plug-in. We have more computers, more devices now than we did back when we used the built-up. Over the course of time, we'll be adding additional power, some of, you know, to our schools. Next year, we will turn the corner on roof projects. Okay, so, we have a few next year that we'll do, but at that point, we'll be done with those that are thirty years or greater. And we have a couple on the horizon that are less than that, that we'll need to pay attention to before they get too bad. If we catch them early enough, the cost will be about half of what it is if we let them go too long. So, hopefully, we'll continue to collaborate with the budget committee and work through these things that we can maintain the board that we're establishing.
How about stadiums?
Like I said, they both, the foundations have been formed. The electrical and plumbing is going in right now, and soon, the structures will be going good.
Commissioner Wall.
Mr. Chairman, and fellow commissioners, I'd like to take the opportunity to stand before you today, not only representing my constituents in District Nine, but a vast majority of the parents, teachers, administrators, and staff of the Jackson-Madison County school system to address what many are probably feeling is the elephant in the room. One of our worst fears was realized with the resignation of Dr. Eric Jones this last week. I'm disheartened and saddened that divisiveness can lead to such a tragic outcome. However, without a doubt, we are witnessing a tragic loss. This is a loss not only for the Jackson-Madison County school system, but to our entire, entire community. For many years, I have wholeheartedly supported excellence in public education. I have served this community in many capacities, from simultaneously serving as PTO president of two schools, to PTO advisor to get more schools, to softball coach, to a classroom volunteer. It has always been my goal to engage the public for the betterment of the Jackson-Madison County schools and our children. I still firmly believe the foundation to any community is public education. Therefore, I have been focal in my support of our superintendent, his team, and in trusting the process. Blessedly, I have seen tremendous positive change over the last two years. Over the last nine months, it has been very difficult for even me, as a county commissioner, to not allow negativity to overshadow the great accomplishments our county has experienced under Dr. Jones' leadership. And the accomplishments are indeed very great. While there are no Gallup poll results, I would venture to say that Dr. Eric Jones is probably the most supported superintendent our community has ever employed. Publicly, the majority, if not all, of this body has pledged their confidence in this man. The Jackson City Council, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, industry, and our businesses, have confirmed their unified confidence and faith in Dr. Jones. Furthermore, as many of us have witnessed through social media, telephone calls, emails, and texts, an overwhelming majority of school system employees have voiced their approval and trust in this superintendent. Curriculum aligned to state requirements will be in every single classroom by August. Our students are improving, improving at an astonishing rate. We have more and more graduating with college credits, and prior to Dr. Jones' hiring, this was unprecedented in Madison County. You have in front of you tonight a full list of the accomplishments under Dr. Jones' tenure. I'd ask you to read that again. In the coming days, our county will be listening and watching to see who will step into the role of superintendent. Nine local school board members will make that decision. The new superintendent will decide whether to continue to build upon the solid bedrock laid by his predecessor, or to build his or her own foundation. One thing is for certain, the nine school board members must choose Dr. Jones' replacement with thorough consideration. To lose their incredible momentum in both academics and morale established by Dr. Jones in his short tenure would be a detriment to our children and to our teachers. The business community will be waiting with intense interest to see the direction of our school board. Some will question the countenance and continuance of the excellent loop and launch programs as new partnerships were just recently formed. Business owners will ponder even more, even more so now, whether to bring their industries to Jackson, as the elimination of Dr. Jones could be a downward turn in performance of the Jackson-Madison County school system. The education community will be scrutinizing every decision made in the coming days. Teachers will question whether curriculum will change, which schools, if any, now, will open, if IPGs will remain, which beloved principals will leave the district, and much more. Even by the time these words are spoken to you today, others will have begun searching for new jobs to escape the chaos that has been created. What will happen to the ten-year plan that was voted on and twice approved by the Board of Education and its committees? Will those who have accomplished the goal of removing Dr. Jones, according to his letter, succeed in pushing this plan to the side once and for all? The elected officials of this community, especially those gathered in this room, should be monitoring the upcoming days with a microscope. While there's not much I, nor my fellow commissioners can do, I would encourage each one of you, as constituents, to contact school board members and demand answers. We must hold this school board accountable. While it is certain this loss will be felt for years to come, I could not, it could not have come at a more unfortunate time with the ESA bill moving through our state legislature. While the Board of Education did approve a resolution refuting ESAs, and they have asked this body to do the same, I fear the actions of a select few, according to Dr. Jones' letter, are giving supporters of this bill the very ammunition they so desire in order to enact it. The citizens of Madison County will certainly be keeping record of all that occurs in the coming days. It is my hope that all residents of Madison County make their voices heard to all nine school board members. It is also my hope that all Madison County residents will maintain their engagement with local elected officials, as every voice does truly matter. I also want to point out the importance of local elections, and use this as an example as the very reason why we should all get involved. To Dr. Jones, I'm fairly certain that I speak for the majority of this body when I say thank you. Thank you for trying. Thank you for bringing this entire community together like no one ever has before. Thank you for your calm resolve and assuring voice of reason. Thank you for your vision that all entities, with the exception of a few, were able to fully support. We all know that you did not have to take this job, especially knowing how extremely difficult it would be to change the course of our schools. But my, looking at this list, how you have done more than what anyone could have hoped for in a very short two years. So, thank you, sir. I also would like to apologize to you and to your family. I apologize for taking you for granted. I apologize that as hard as we have worked to see your vision come to fruition, we couldn't actualize every piece of that plan. While I believe in your vision, whether it be a new K-8 program, expanded pre-K, a new JCM, or Madison, whether we see any of these things become reality now is anyone's guess. Regardless, please know that I and most everyone in this room appreciate you, your familial sacrifices, your passion, and your resolve. Though you may leave this position, just know that you have left a lasting impression on the hearts of many in this community. Moving forward, I can only pray that it will be in one accord. This, I fear, will entirely depend on the actions of those causing the quote "fundamental differences" mentioned in Dr. Jones' resignation letter. This is the reason our school leader is not allowed to lead, as Dr. Jones stated. I would hope that if there are any, that all outside influences will be put aside, and the voices of the citizens of this great county be clearly heard. I will close my comments today by reaffirming, reaffirming my public support and faith in Dr. Eric Jones, his leadership team, and his long-term vision for Jackson and Madison County. I will also go on record as pleading with our school board members to examine their hearts and to fully determine whether this job is meant for each of them, more than lip service is owed to our children, our teachers, and our families. To those who are elected, if you are not genuinely working for the best interest of those who are also your constituents, it is certainly time to step aside. Furthermore, I urge you to unify and to do so quickly as the board starts to execute damage control. Budget season is upon us. It is my desire to see progress made by Dr. Eric Jones flourish. Progress will not happen without a genuinely unified school board. Brandon Shields, the editor of the Jackson Sun, once wrote, and I quote, "There needs to be a clear objective, something more tangible than what's best for all students." Do we see this clear objective now? What we have now is a unanimous vote for minor changes to teacher schedules. We have board members saying God told them to resign, and then the next day saying God told them not to resign. We have outlandish items placed on meeting agendas that waste time when more important matters are at hand. We have rushed agenda items with no time for consideration prior to a vote. The path is long to see the Jackson-Madison County school system realize its full potential. It will require everyone working as one for the greater good. Constant infighting only maximizes the struggle and helps no one. This is the opposite of the goal, and I believe this, of all nine school board members claiming to share. Lastly, know this, the Jackson-Madison County school system is filled with thousands of children, including my own four, administrators, teachers, and faculty who deserve the very best, and very best every single day. Teachers love our children and sacrifice daily to make sure that our little ones are thoroughly prepared for their futures. These men and women deserve the best resources we can provide, as well as our respect and our gratitude. As for our children, they are the future of this town, and we must ensure that we equip them well. Twelve thousand plus beautiful children in this county, their parents and their teachers depend on this school board and this commission to simply do the right thing every single day. I am personally dedicated to that end, and I pray that we will all choose to do what is right for the sake of our children. Our choices have lasting consequences for our industry, our economy, and our infrastructure. And education is the number one, the D foundation for all of those things. Distinction and negativity are currently stunting our growth. Several of us here in this room today were part of a recent industrial parks meeting that with, and the question that I had to get answered during that meeting was, quote, "Can you give me the top reasons why we do not have more industry deciding to locate here to Jackson and Madison County?" End quote. And there was only one answer, and I quote, "Because in all instances, the CEOs and staff of that industry, or industries, were simply Googling our community and schools and seeing exactly what we all see, and they decided to locate elsewhere." End quote. How much more will we lose before we say that enough is truly enough? Do we continue down a path of self-destruction? Do we undo progress? Do we allow these outside influences to keep destroying any glimmer of hope? Do we forego our children's future, or do we make a change? The choice resides with the school board. The options are clear to me, that everyone who calls Madison County home depends on unified leadership. Mr. Chairman, I certainly am not perfect, nor do I expect other elected officials to be perfect. However, I am committed to listening to all of my constituents. I would only expect all elected officials to do the same, is to listen to their constituents, draw conclusions, and place votes based on their representation. Therefore, I implore my fellow commissioners here today to reach out to their constituents, as they are the same constituents represented by the school board members. Now more than ever, we should be hearing what those who elected us have to say. While I have been very involved in education, attending ninety-five percent of all school board and subcommittee meetings, I am no expert. The real experts are in the classrooms every single day. They too need to be heard. Furthermore, Mr. Chairman, if we as elected officials, whether school board or commissioners, are unwilling to work together, represent this community, and support our future, I respectfully ask those officials to reevaluate their seat at the table, allowing room for those who are committed to success to serve in their place. I also ask my brothers and sisters here today to carefully evaluate any and all requests that are brought before us by this school board. As much as we need to support our children and our teachers, we need to ensure that every request made to this body is in accordance with that in mind, in order to support progress within our public schools. Today is a new day. While I am still mourning this great loss to our community and continue to field numerous calls expressing disappointment in the actions of the school board, I will remain vigilant in fighting for our children. I can only pray this body and our school board will do the same. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wall.
I just want to say amen.
I just want to raise off.
Item number six. Report from county officials standing in special committees in the old business, and reaction thereof by this board. Commissioner Mercer.
I'd like to report on the fund balancing insurance committee. Uh, one million three hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars. That's what we have in the balancing of insurance committee at this point. At this time, if you would, I'd like for Mr. Smith from Recreation Department to make a statement.
I just want to bring everybody up to date on a few things. We're in the process of enrolling for summer camp. Nomo Summer Camp is full, and has been for about a week now. Beach Bluff Summer Camp is ahead of this time last year, so those are looking good. We had, we had a daddy-daughter dance Saturday night with all the rain. We had a hundred and sixty people there. Everybody that bought tickets showed up. The rain didn't keep them away, so, so that was a good thing. And also, the Easter egg hunt that was scheduled for this past Saturday at Peabody Park will be this coming Saturday, the twentieth, at Peabody. Registration starts at eight o'clock, and hunt itself starts at nine. If anybody out is watching, be there at nine, because it only takes about two minutes and it's, it's done, so don't be late.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioner Pearson.
Mr. Chairman, on April the tenth, the excess resale property committee met, and we had the following properties that we bring before the commission today. We had a bid from Albrialis Bond for a six-seventy-one Old Pinson Road in the amount of twenty-five-hundred dollars, and we accepted that bid. This is a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Nikki Forrest submitted a bid for three-thirty-four Lincoln Street in the amount of fourteen-hundred dollars, and we accepted that bid. This is a committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Nathan and Joy Boyd submitted a bid for four-fifteen Haddon Street in the amount of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Lawrence T. Harris submitted bids for three-twenty-five Webster Street in the amount of six-hundred dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Harris submitted a bid for three-oh-two Webster Street in the amount of one-thousand dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Harris submitted a bid for three-forty-four East Dedrick Street in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Harris committed, submitted a bid for three-thirty-eight East Dedrick Street in the amount of one-thousand dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Mr. Harris committed, submitted a bid for three-thirty-two East Dedrick Street in the amount of six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Janessa Mays submitted a bid for one-ten Stoddard Street in the amount of five-hundred dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Ms. Mays also submitted a bid for three-ten East Dedrick Street in the amount of seven-hundred dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
And lastly, Derek Britt submitted a bid for two-forty Sim Street in the amount of fifteen-hundred dollars. Committee recommendation.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Bush.
The Highway Committee met today, and we voted to approve a thousand dollars to come from the County General Fund that would reimburse the Highway Department to repair potholes on Madison Technology Drive. This is a road that the county owns, but it's not on the county road list because it's in the city of Jackson, but we still have to pay for it. So, it was a committee recommendation, and if you might have any questions about it, I'm sure Superintendent Wall...
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, yes, sir.
Excuse me. Listen, I, uh, I don't understand why I'm not getting email for Highway Committee meetings.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, pull it up.
You got more than one email address here?
Just one. Just got one.
Right there. I pulled it in.
Where you sending it to?
I sent it to both, the county email and your personal.
I don't have a county email.
Everybody has a county email.
I don't, I don't give them a county email.
Well, I sent it to both.
I didn't receive.
We'll, we'll get you added your personal mail address.
That's, that's, that's two or three times it's happened to me. I'll sit there, and she be in the office, and says she emailed, and I never get it.
Go over and show it to him.
I don't want to see it. I want to see it at home.
Well, she's sending it out. Now, while you're not receiving it, I guess that's, we don't know that, but we'll try to figure that out.
That's all, how, we, we, we vote on that?
No.
We need to vote.
We didn't vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any other committee report?
I have some old business. We have two resolutions I think were sent out to approve the master equity lease agreement, the lease vehicles to the Jackson-Madison County school system and Madison County, and Attorney Maroney can speak to those.
You may remember, I asked to carry this under old business, but one's old and one's new, but maybe be expedient to handle them both now. You may recall last month, you approved the terms of a lease agreement for some vehicle leases for the school system, but it is required that there be a resolution adopting and approving that agreement. So, prepared a resolution that was only sent out to you all last week. So, it will require two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, so you can take that up. If there are any questions about that lease, that's fine. There's a typo error on the date. If you'll approve it, subject to the date being corrected to today's date, we'll go ahead. So, you'll need a vote to suspend the rules, and then a vote to approve that resolution.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Have a motion, second. Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Mercer.
If you, uh, there is a second resolution that's technically new business that I was asked to prepare by the Finance Director. Same essentially, same agreement. It's a resolution to approve a lease agreement for, for vehicle, or maybe it's a single vehicle, but my understanding is this is a vehicle for the building.
Building department.
So, if you would approve both of those leases, we'll be ready to go.
I think we voted suspend.
Yeah. Need a motion?
We need to vote on the rules.
We need to vote to suspend the rules.
Any vote on suspend the rule?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
I'd move that we adopt each of these resolutions.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Hale. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any other committee report?
Chairman, I usually don't like to pass over opportunities to talk, but this is probably the best opportunity I've ever had, and I'm going to. So, we had no presentation.
Item number eight, presentation from the Jackson Arts Council. Come on down.
Mr. Chairman, and to this Board of County Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Before I go on, I would like to recognize, we have a number of board members with us along with the Arts Coalition. I'd like to recognize them by asking them to please stand.
Thank you.
They're a little bit shy.
How was that? They're on stage.
We do want to thank you and appreciate you all, and are, we're so deeply appreciative of your support. We thank you for helping us to achieve our Arts Council mission, and that's strengthening the arts. We, we feel like we're making a great impact on this community.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Any other committee report? Item number seven. Report from our county mayor, second time.
Chairman, I usually don't like to pass over an opportunity to talk, but this is probably the best opportunity I've ever had, and I'm going to.
Item number eight, presentation from the Jackson Arts Council. Come on down.
Mr. Chairman, and to this Board of County Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, before I go on, I would like to recognize, we have a number of board members with us along with our Arts Coalition. I'd like to recognize them by asking them to please stand. They're a little bit shocked.
How is that? They're on stage.
We do want to thank you and appreciate you all, and, and, uh, we're so deeply appreciated of your support. We thank you for helping us to achieve our Arts Council mission, and that's strengthening the arts. Uh, we, uh, we feel like we're making a great impact on this community, uh, and, and this is grant season. And with that, I'm going to turn over the presentation to our Executive Director, Melinda Reed, so she can share some of the accomplishments that you have, uh, supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. And, um, as Ted just said, we are preparing for, um, grant season. It's a busy time for us. Um, our upcoming Jack Grant, a Jackson Arts Council Grant, is made possible, um, by Madison County as well as City of Jackson, and we're just so grateful for that support. If you have attended any of the following events, then you have been directly impacted by the Jackson Arts Council or Jack Grant. Ballet Arts, the Nutcracker, Jackson Symphony, the Starlight Symphony, Jackson Downtown Development Corporation's Night at the Ant, which you've got a new schedule. Jackson Theater Guild had two productions funded by the Jackson Arts Council Grant. So those were four recipients in two thousand eighteen totaling over thirteen thousand dollars in grant funding that was made possible by the Madison County, um, to support that grant. We also have another grant program called the ABC Grant, and that is more of a regional grant that several Madison County art and cultural groups benefit from this, also very highly competitive, um, grant program as well. We are designated agency by the state to, uh, be trained and facilitate the ABC Grant. And this is, um, for counties such as Chester, Decatur, Harden, Hardeman, Haywood, Henderson, Madison, and Mount Mary. It's funded by the Tennessee General Assembly and administered by the Tennessee Arts Commission, and then we get to bring it on home here and have it to benefit our great community. Both grant programs are highly competitive. As I said, we go through a formal grant procedure. Our citizens panel, uh, reflects the demographic makeup of our community. Uh, they sacri- sacrifice about ten-plus hours to serve on the grant panel, read every application, and score according to the supplied rubric. And then the grant, um, writers get to come and defend the grant. If you'd like to know more or would like to sit on our panel, I would be glad to get you plugged in. Uh, it is ve- very beneficial, and it gives you great, um, a new level of great pride within, uh, the community to know just how much time and effort goes into our local art and cultural groups. Ballet Arts, Brown School, Haywood County Arts Council, Community Multicultural Art Care Center, or CMAC, Jackson Floral Society, Jackson Symphony League, Jackson Theater Guild, River Time Players, Lang College, and the Star Center are all recipients of the ABC Grant that we also facilitate. So we have some new applicants within that category of the ABC Grant, and we're very excited to have some new applicants. So we just humbly thank you for your, um, ongoing support to connect and strengthen the arts in our community. The support, as you see, allows us to grant over twenty-five thousand dollars to thirteen art organizations, not only to Jackson but to West Tennessee communities, thus strengthening and connecting art and cultural organizations. Through grant workshops, networking opportunities, publicity, um, advocacy, and so much more. And as we close in our presentation, it's just worth sharing, um, that art organization fell through reduction of thirty-seven percent from the county's funding this year, and we just humbly ask that your support continues at that current level moving forward so we can continue our fifty-plus years of investing in our community, um, through our art and cultural organizations. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Item number nine. Approval of a resolution to transfer funds from the General Purpose School Fund to the Federal Projects Fund as the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Ray, anything about this? Holly?
We're requesting to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our General Purpose Schools Fund to our Federal Projects Fund to support cash flow for the reimbursable grants and federal programs.
Did this come before the Finance Committee?
It did.
It did, okay. It did, I remember now. Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item number ten. Appalling one member to the Ethics Committee by the, this body, one-year term, Charles Byrd, incumbent. I think Charles had to resign then.
This, this particular item may be a little out of order, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Byrd, uh, has, has not actually submitted his letter of resignation, so it's not, and his term's not expired. His term doesn't expire till August. So I, I would say that this item needs to be tabled, and my understanding is he intends to submit his resignation. You all have to vote to accept it, and then you can appoint a successor the following month.
I have a motion to table by Commissioner Mercer, second by, to Mr. Alexander. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item number eleven, appointing one member to the Madison County Long Ranch Planning Committee by the Budget Committee. For the Budget Committee, one-year term, Larry Lorenz is incumbent, Commissioner Stevens.
Even despite people's best efforts to remind me about this, we forgot to do this today, so this purpose I've made today, so.
All right, we'll move that to the May meeting. Item number twelve, appoint one member to the Madison County Long Ranch Planning Committee by the Finance Committee for the Financial Management Committee, one-year term, Gary Deaton incumbent. Arthur, did we do that in the Finance?
We did, and you were on, right?
There you go.
Yeah, I was. Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item number thirteen. Oh, we're moving right along, folks. Any amendment or transfer to the General Fund, School Department, Capital Project, Highway Department, Debt Service, Juvenile Court Service, budget year for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Commissioner Johnson, you got the floor.
Item one forty-one, General Purpose Schools, item one, ninety-eight thousand two hundred dollars, State Priority School Grant. This amendment aligns the general ledger to the provision two budget in E Plan. Funds are being moved within the grant to cover projected expenditures through fiscal year end.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item two, five hundred thousand dollars, Transfer Funds. This amendment will move funds from the General Purpose School for Federal Projects for the purpose of adding restricted operating money to the state cash flow for these reimbursable grants.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item three, fifty thousand dollars, Project Lead the Way, Project Lead the Way. This grant provides teachers with the training resources and support to engage students in the real world and learn.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? It says new money. Meaning.
But it's a grant.
Grant. Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item four, nine thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars, Insurance Recovery. Funds received for repairs to storm damage at the bus stop.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Fund one forty-two, School Federal Projects, item five, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for District Priority School Improvement Grant. This amendment aligns the general ledger to the revision two budget in E Plan. Funds will be moved within the grant to cover projected expenditures through, uh, the fiscal year end.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item six, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Additional Target Support and Improvement Grant. This grant provides support for district and school-level strategies to improve student outcome.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item seven, five hundred dollars, Read to Be Read Summer Grant. This amendment aligns the general ledger in the state-approved budget in E Plan.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Fund one seventy-seven, Educational Camp, item eight, thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-three dol- eighty-three dollars, Insurance Recovery, Funds Received for Repairs to Storm Damage at Southside High School.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item nine, five million two hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and five dollars. This amendment will appropriate the remaining fund balance to use for the following projects. HBA C, Roof and Civil Work at East Elementary, Roof at Community, uh, Community Monastery, and Roof at Parkway Learning Center. Any remaining funds will be used for identified school projects.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item ten A through ten L are thought in-house amendments. Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we deal with these all at once, and we'll try to answer any questions that Commissioner has.
Any objections? Have a motion?
Second.
Have second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
PMA, item eleven, eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, PMA received a SBAT grant and request, request, uh, appropriate spending.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twelve, five thousand dollars, Capital Fund. PMA will receive a grant for truck. This request is Madison County shared. Uh, the city of Jackson will also have to contribute five thousand dollars. This comes from fund balance.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Internal Audit, item thirteen, seven hundred dollars. He requests more money for travel. This comes from fund balance.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Health Department, item fourteen, two thousand two hundred dollars, Ten Care Kids. Request is from Unemployment to Maintenance and Remains and Utilities.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item fifteen, nine hundred and ten dollars. Request is from Other Supplies and Materials to Salaries and Wages.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item sixteen, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, tobacco use prevention. Request is from Salaries, Benefits, and several other items to Other Supplies and Materials.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Finance, item seventeen, three hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and six dollars. Request is to change revenue items. Has the request of the auditors. All they're doing is just changing places.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion?
I, look, brief question. If you don't finish that statement, you said all of those are the auditors that you're going.
Mr. Brown.
They're just changing, uh, uh, positions in the budget with it.
What kind of businesses?
Because this way, the cost of the auditors.
Mr. Nichols.
We got it from transfer of funds at the budget. They want it for contributions. That's all we're changing.
Yeah.
Same dollars.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Five thousand nine hundred dollars. Request is to change revenue lines.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item nineteen, three million one hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and seven dollars, Debt Service Fund. Request is to change expenditures functions in debt service.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty, ten thousand dollars. Request is to move revenue and interest and penalty to trustee commission and fund balance. This adds seven thousand dollars to fund balance.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty-one, eight thousand dollars, Special Purpose Fund. More money is requested from fund balance to trustee's commission.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Highway Department, twenty-two thousand, twenty, item twenty-two, five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Request is from Benefit Lines to other Benefit Lines.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Priority Department, item twenty-three, one thousand three hundred dollars. Request is to use training reimbursement for training.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty-four, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Request is to use training reimbursement for training.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred dollars. Request is for various revenue lines that increase to be used for various miscellaneous expenditures.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Veteran Services, item twenty-six, one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents. Request is to apply, apply the travel refund they receive to travel.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
County Buildings, item twenty-seven, ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. Request is basically to secure and repave the front of the General Court Building.
Committee recommendation, no second required, any discussion? Commissioner Stevens.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, Mark A. Day and I have been talking about this, and, uh, it just came to our attention, and I had, uh, Highway, Highway, uh, Bart Walz talked to Commissioner Taylor Day about seeing if we could maybe do that in a, in a, in a less expensive manner. Bart, do you want to say something about that?
Sure.
I haven't had opportunity to talk to Mark about it, but we'd like, we, we need to get this done. I mean, and I, I know this is just something, we've had some confusion over when we could use Bart and when we couldn't, so if you don't mind saying something about it.
Sure. Um, I have not looked at this parking lot, but the question was asked of me prior to this meeting if, uh, paving of this parking lot is something that the Highway Department could do. Uh, it's, uh, not something that we could physically do because we don't actually own a, uh, paving machine, but we can contract it out, and so in order to make that happen, this body would have to vote to allow the Highway Department to do that and expend funds towards that, and then the Highway Department would have to be reimbursed by the county or that department, uh, for those services. Attorney Maroni can explain it probably a little bit better than I can, but it is certainly something that we could look at, and, or if you would like for me to bid it out, uh, and, and take bids and see what those bids are. We get competitive bids from, from two or three different contractors, uh, go that route and choose to do it or not do it.
Commissioner Taylor.
I just think it's not going to hurt to have Bart take a look at it and see if we can save some money. This is a fairly significant amount. I agree it probably needs to be done because I've had to park over there in the grass and everything else when it was raining, but, uh, we just need to, to make sure that we're doing it as. doing it as wisely as we can.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir. It's definitely prudent and practical if we can do the work in-house, but our policy provide for this type of money and this type of work should be bided out anyway. So it should, it's no such thing as a pass-through. It, then we get the most competitive, uh, competitive, uh, you know, price for the work.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I believe just Walz bided it out, if I'm saying that correctly, Mark.
The state bid is, would be a bid on state bid. I called three other companies, nobody came to come out and look at it. They kept saying they wouldn't, they never did. So with state bid, you don't have to bid it now.
I remember studying that policy that we sat, uh, sat here and it did not set, make any provision that we would not put out this, these kind of things for bid. And I hope that we, uh, and I know most people I talked to think that's the way we do business around here and I hope this, if this is the way we do business because, uh, um, we used to buy things from consumer, uh, government consumer catalog. Occasionally when you put things out for bid, you find it's cheaper than they're doing, you know, uh, we want to be good stewards.
Commissioner Petty.
Uh, I, I don't have a lot of experience with the state contract, but I know recently we looked at some, uh, paving off of the state contract for the health department and, uh, the state contract was, was quite a bit more expensive than, than the pricing that I got off of a, off of a bid. Um, so I, I think there is a possibility of some opportunity for some savings there.
Commissioner Petty.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow Bart to, uh, do the bid and get out and, and make sure that we get competitive work here, uh, and get it done at the best price.
Have a motion? Second, by Commissioner Ellison. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
We need no action on this number twenty-seven then, do we?
No. Don't need to table. Make a motion to table?
Yes.
Item number twenty-seven, do I have a second?
I have that.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty-eight. Be ready for the next.
Yes, twenty-eight.
Twenty thousand dollars, request is for maintenance on the port side of the CIC bill.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item twenty-nine, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars capital fund, request is to appropriate unused funds from a prior year's purchase order.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
I was just wondering what that's for. What is, yeah, what is it? What's that on the table?
Item twenty-nine, county buildings, might want to ask Mark Aday.
Which one are you asking about?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Was that the floor or in the basement?
Mr. Chairman.
Mark, is that part of juvenile court building? Unused, it was requested for, to appropriate unused funds for a prior year purchasing order. Is that a court?
That's the money left over from the basement.
That's right, yeah.
I had a budget of sixty, it didn't cost for like thirty-five, changed what they were doing, so we didn't have to spend as much.
That was the insurance money left over.
Right.
Where'd the money go back to?
If that's juvenile carpet, that's the, that's the insurance money.
It's back in the general fund then, right? It says captain, capital fund. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? None. Commissioner Brown.
Not to be a thorn, but, um, uh, I talk a lot and I like to have clarity. Why is this not going back in general fund? We have these type of transactions, you know, all the way it was going to be insured things of that nature.
It came from captain.
Came from captain.
Not a reason it came from, so we're, so we're replacing.
Sheriff's Department, item thirty, five hundred dollars, request is to use fund balance for trust pay commission.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-one, twenty thousand eighteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, request is for miscellaneous revenue items to be spent in various expenditure lines.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-two, four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents, request is for grant funds to be spent in that area.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-three, twenty-eight thousand twenty dollars and ninety-four cents, City of Jackson's reimbursement for crime stopper officer.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-four, thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars, twenty-four cents, new jail grant reimbursement.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-five, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, payment for resignations and retirements.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, Commissioner Stevenson.
I'd just like to know how much money, uh, Mr. Nichols, have we spent so far out of this, out of this, for this year so far?
Money was, was a hundred and seventy-six thousand, roughly a hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Hundred and seventy-six thousand. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Commissioner Taylor's no, Commissioner Tuck Compton no. Tommy, did you, did you raise your hand?
No.
Okay.
Ready for the next one. Item thirty-six, thirteen thousand two hundred dollars capital fund, request is for maintenance and repair of building from sale of equipment.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Item thirty-seven, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents, city reimbursement for their share of JAG grants to be spent on sheriff's duties.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Building department, item thirty-eight, one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, request is from data processing equipment and other contracted services to IT communications for phone for new employees.
Committee of recommendation, no second required, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Sheriff's Department, item thirty-nine, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, request is for additional funds for food supplies at the jail.
Committee of recommendation, no second required.
We need to roll the call.
Any discussion? Commissioner.
I'm just curious, is, I wasn't here last month, so I appreciate you guys allowing this to come up again so we can talk about it. Um, was just curious, is, is there any other, like, programs or I'm just, I'm not trying to be a micromanaging part of this body, but I, I definitely want to hear more about why this is coming up again. I mean, if we, if.
It was, it was, it was, last month it was, the finance committee recommended it, it was voted down by this body.
Okay, so this is another, so you're.
It came back to finance committee, it's coming back up again.
It's recommended again.
Recommended again, yeah.
Okay, is there any other, I mean, this might be directed toward the sheriff, but is there any other way, I mean, I feel like food or the, the jail's priority was a high priority. Is there anything that we can kind of adjust fire on some other programs inside the sheriff's department that we could use for fundless? I'm not trying to make.
You want to address that, Commissioner Stevenson? You want to?
Uh, several things here. The, the one hundred and sixty-eight, I think one of the things we need to do first is to see the money needed for the remainder of the year, so I would ask Barry, what money are you needing for the remainder of this year to, to?
That's based on three months more, uh, purchase orders that will be done.
No, I'm not just talking about food, I'm talking about the whole ball of things.
Oh, everything?
Sir.
You talking about every expenditure?
I'm talking about the whole ball of that.
Right now, let's go to, we just say payroll and overtime. You, I showed you that schedule I did the other day, still showing a negative balance by the end of the year. I'm hoping that we can come out very close to even on that. I'm working hard as I can, we all are, trying to get that to come out right.
You're saying negative balance where, uh, there's, uh?
Well, if you take all payroll and time together.
Hold your back.
I, I, right now it's showing that we might be a little short, but I'm hoping that we can come out by the end of June, you know, without having to ask for anything. Medical supplies, we asked for a hundred and ten thousand, this group was gracious enough to grant a hundred and ten thousand in medical supplies. We have actually already overspent that, not a thing we can do. We have had a seventy-one thousand dollar bill from Med to Med. We've had a, a bill that was reduced to twenty-five, twenty-six thousand. We've had a air flight bill reduced sixty-five percent to twenty-five thousand. We, we've done, we've got so many medical expenses that were actually overdrawn in medical again, but I think that may be enough of the contract amount to move to that, so we won't have to ask for any more there. One thing that we don't have anywhere to get any money for right now is the food. We're twenty-seven thousand overdrawn, about to do another fifty-six thousand dollar purchase order. We really need this, this to be moved. We're going to have a hole somewhere if we don't.
Commissioner Hale.
I'm just curious if there's any, like, any creative solutions outside of this category, whether it be, you know, I'm from a law enforcement background, I know a lot of times in the military and at JPD, my time at JPD, when, when times got tough, you know, we moved our patrolman to a twelve-hour shift and I, I know that there's money-saving opportunities there because you essentially, you take a shift and you, and you, and you, you move those people over to cover a lot of the overtime and I know that a lot of overtime is in the jail, so I, I'm just asking that we just do everything we can to work inside our budget, whether it be, let's delay some other programs, like, whether it be buying, buying guns or, you know, there's a lot of things that we're, that we've done well in the sheriff's department and I, you know, commend you for all the work that you've done where, you know, there's more patrolmen on the road in the county than our hi, than in our history. You know, we've gone from five for the entire county to, you know, eight to ten per shift and so a lot of good things happening, I'm just, is there any other, like, creative ideas that we could consider before, you know, funding this request here?
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, I want to raise the procedural point of order. We approve and disapprove things all the time. And if the factors have not changed, why is this back up again in the, you know, we approve some things, I mean, disapprove of many things and we didn't come back the next week and have to do the same thing again?
I wonder.
Did you get? Did, I mean, what's different, different than this and otherwise, why did we meet last week, why we take the matter up? You know, does I, do I actuals here make any difference? You know, you know?
He was brought back to the finance committee. Commissioner Petty.
I didn't get a response though.
I just told you, he was brought back to the finance committee.
Okay, please.
Let me go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead and, go ahead. The, in your packet today is, uh, a report on the, uh, number of bills that were served. Uh, and you will look at two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Uh, the yearly total is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-two. Uh, I mean, the total bills, I'm sorry, out to your, to your right, the last column, total bills, was three hundred and forty-one thousand five fifty-two. All right, then, uh, on the two thousand seventeen, eighteen, it moved to three ninety-eight, eight seventy-seven. All right, and we are at three eighty-three, seven fifty-two, with three more months to go. So, and we're averaging, uh, looks like about thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two per month. Uh, so we're looking at another a hundred and five thousand, uh, a hundred and six thousand or seven thousand there to add, so, uh, which is going to be about four hundred and ninety-thousand, which is a hundred thousand more bills. That's due to the population, guys. That's nobody's fault. That is nobody's fault. That's people just in the jail that's got to be paid.
Commissioner Davidson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me give you, uh, in addressing Commissioner Brown, these are some options for the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And that's why I was asking the first question about what they're needing moving, moving forward, because there's going to be quite a bit of, in my opinion, quite a bit of money.
Commissioner.
But, thank you, Mr. Chairman. But we, we have, we have several options, well, I'll say several, none of them are very good options, but we have some options, okay? The way, uh, uh, and that's why I was asking about the money that we need for the remainder of the year, because last year they turned in approximately four hundred thousand dollars at the, at the end of the year. That's what they did. That was primarily, if I want to refresh my memory, uh, finance, that was about two hundred thousand dollars of benefits and some things that we can't delve into till the very end of the year. When I say delve into, I mean, it's just moving. Um, the thing is, what we can do to, uh, do this is of course, the, the money management thing, which would, which would be, which would be, we've got a situation like here, uh, Commissioner Petty said, there are some things that are out of our control in there. The thing that we can do though, number one option, is to go ahead and, uh, uh, we could vote no on this, okay? And then what we could do is the, 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 the money goes through, so in other words, when Barry sends a, sends an invoice through, that's just overridden at the finance office for the remainder of the year. So in other words, it's just overridden. So at the end of the year, we end up with whatever fund balance we have for all of this, if I'm saying this correctly, then we come out, if he comes out short, though, if it will be short, he'll, he'll get an audit fine. That's where we are, okay? Number two option, what we can do, and we looked at this very, uh, right, right before, was try to take, find money in the, in the fund balances of all the, uh, of all the deputy line items and everything, but we're going to fall short there. Now what we could do is do it out of there and that's not overridden, that'll just come through and then that may end up, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, please correct me, but that will come through and then at the end of the year, we would, we would see where, where we are short or whatever. But those are the two, if I'm thinking correctly, those are the two options that we have for the hundred and sixty-eight thousand, in other words, just continue to override them and see what money we have at the end of the year. If I, if I'm making that clear.
You're making it clear, I was just wondering if, I was just wondering if, uh, a lot of time in, in, in public management, when you have under rounds in one department, you got vacancies, uh, a, 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 a num, a lot of contingencies, it's just a matter of shifting.
Well.
The priority, you know, based on, you know?
The problem is, is, is.
If you got the numbers.
Problem is, is we don't have that luxury in this, in this particular case. I'm not, I'm saying based on the things that we see. Normally, Commissioner Brown, I, you know, in all my years of doing this, I would say that's, that's just, that's a no-brainer.
We don't have those.
But we don't have that option here.
Okay.
Me personally, I, I, I just, I just, I would like to vote no, just from the standpoint of seeing it, seeing it out. of seeing it, seeing it out and sort of seeing where we are as we move forward. That's where we are. Then just send the invoices in, let them override them, and see where we are.
One last thing before I sit down. So I, I understand that we, like, we don't have control over this. I understand that. Um, and when I say creative, I just, what part of the budget do we have control over that we can kind of make some adjustments on, not only for this year, but for, for next year as well, to, to work, um, more fiscally, uh, capable?
Let the Sheriff speak to this.
You know, we, we proposed the budget last year. We were right on topic. It had turned down. So, you know, the thing is, we have no control over any of it. We've got five terrific budgets from the Sheriff. This is under corrections. We've got one to fill for. So Captain Rutter can speak to what we're going through, the bills, we're doing everything we can. We can't control the prisoners. We can't control their health when they come in. We can't control all these big medical bills. But one thing, you know, we, since I've been in office, we have not had an exception in the budget from the fact, all the facts, and out of all of them. That was my goal, all of them. And we, we managed our money, we watched it all the way through, and the thing is, when we put our budget request on our budget, we're, we're right on the line. Doug talks about four hundred thousand or so turned back. We have no control over that neither. When you take all the different items, you got a thousand here and a thousand there, and you can't switch some of these. Uh, benefits, you know, we got lots of people who don't reduce benefits, but they're still calculated in everybody, so there's no way to tell that. So the thing is, is, you know, my con, my whole concern is, is taking care of the jail. That liability is on me. And that's the reason I come to you about, I'm not pulling a clue to everybody else, because that's where, there's a lot of lawsuits filed, it comes back. I'm limited, my liability. I'm putting that on y'all. And, uh, that's, that's what can happen, because I've seen it happen. And there's, I mean, y'all went through it years ago, back in, before the other jail was built, when we keep the people in Mason, Austin, or Fortune. We don't want that either. That's what's fixing to happen. And you gotta, you gotta treat the jail within the jail. And control is the only way to get people off of control. We, we got officers that get attacked. I mean, this is, this world is, is totally out of control. And so, you know, I'm not putting officers live, lives in danger, and we're doing everything we can. Same way in jail. We got detention officers that are, we're, you know, we're trying to hire as fast as, yeah, we got four next week coming in, but we hired four and we lose five. And so, I mean, it's, it's a scary situation. It's kind of like the night at a community meeting. An individual brought it up, said, why don't the commissioners go down there and work in the jail for eight-hour shifts at least once, twice a month? Same way on patrol. We welcome all of that, you see, they have to go for it. And then it may have a, you may have a different perspective on things, but it's important that we, we got to have a scruple justice system. And in today's world, we got, whatever happens, I mean, we got to be prepared, because I guarantee you, if we get shorted, you don't, you don't do anything, and something happens, you don't say, why didn't they do it? What's wrong with them? Why haven't they got that? They criticize us. We're following right in, you know, our budget as far, as close as we can. And, uh, you don't know how much time and hours I've lost sleep on. And I think they can change it, because they've seen me when I come in in Morehouse, because, you know, we're doing everything. The end of this department, we've sat here and stand here and listened. The last commission meeting, when that was turned down, I was testifying before the Senate Subcommittee Directors. And then I got that message that it was turned down. And I, Senator asked me, and I, I brought it up, he said, what are you gonna do? He said, you gotta pay the prisoners. I said, that's right. He said, you don't have any choice. I said, yes, sir, that's right. And I said, well, we're gonna, we'll do whatever we have to do.
Commissioner Goble.
We talked a week or so ago about, uh, overtime. Have you had, have you made any progress to see if we have?
I have not, right from...
If we have actually paid overtime in the past, and come out years in the past up to now, have you had any progress in doing that?
I've, I've got the document to, to say that we're not doing it, uh, according to the, the Federal Labor Standards Act, and I have that, and I can, I can read it, but basically what it says is, it says a public agency may adopt a work period from seven to twenty-eight consecutive days for law enforcement employees. If an employee works equal to or less than a certain number of hours specified in the statute and regulations during the work period, no overtime is owed. In other words, for a seven-day period, it would be forty-three hours. For a twenty-eight-day period, it would be a hundred and seventy-one hours. We are not doing that, because Sheriff has the, the right, for use of a better phrase, he can do what he's currently doing now, which is, and I'll go back over that again, you get sixteen hours on Monday, you get eight hours overtime. You get sixteen hours on Tuesday, you get eight hours overtime. And then on Wednesday, you work eight hours, that's forty, forty hours. In other words, you're getting twenty-four hours. If I'm incorrect, please call me down. You get twenty-four hours of regular time and sixteen hours overtime. Right now, there are approximately eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars in overtime. That's right now. They're gonna end up probably being along the lines of about a million to a million in overtime. I don't know how it's gonna do. This needs to be, this, what you're asking for, uh, Commissioner Goble, needs to be turned over to the Personnel Committee, and we need to make sure that we have it correct in our handles, which we don't. We do not have that correct in our handles.
But the point I'm trying to make is...
That's the answer to your question.
Point I'm trying to make is that we have paid in years past overtime when it was not due.
I can't, I can't answer that, Commissioner Goble. What I did was I talked to, uh, Mr. Burkhead today about looking into that, to see where we are on that, so I, I honestly do not know. What's, what's come of this overtime in the last two years? And, and this is in fairness to the Sheriff. The, our previous Sheriff didn't care whether we had one person down there looking over pot A or whether we had the right number. The Sheriff is trying to do the right thing. I'm just saying is, when we met, we're trying to work through this, is what I'm trying to say. I want to give the Sheriff credit. He's trying to have the right number of people down there. But the problem is, the way we're doing it, is what it does, it puts a, it puts a real burden on, on, on Tom Rutter, because you've got a person that's working for three days and then is manipulating the system, and then says, well, I don't think I'm gonna work the rest of the time. I said, I've already made my overtime here and working. And so what it does, it put, even though we're, we're shorthanded still, but what I'm, I think you understand what I'm saying, is, is it makes it very difficult for Tom to do his job when we have people just manipulating the system. And like I said last month, we have these people that are making this much money three years ago, and now they're making this much. And it's based on what, what we just talked about.
Yeah, I've got...
And that's, but I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Billy of, of Burkhead look into it, 'cause I, and, and, and the Sheriff is most agreeable. I mean, I think we met, and we're most agreeable, but it needs to go through the Personnel, so we have a clear, clear, clear understanding of what we're doing on overtime.
Is that in form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a motion on table, Chairman. We've got a committee recommendation on the table right now.
I'm sorry, help, but what, that was, that might have...
We got a committee recommendation for the money on the table right now.
We got it, we've got, we got a motion on the floor already.
Okay, let me, let me, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Goble, you got anything else, or do I need to?
Well, I would like, uh, Mr. Maroney's opinion. Have y'all, if y'all are gonna get together, are, are you of any opinion as far as the overtime that has been paid in the past, as far as the law is concerned?
I don't have any comment on what's been done in the past. I'm not, I have little part of that. I can say what he's saying is correct. There are parameters as to what you have to do concerning overtime. You don't have to have it on a seven-day or, you know, you can have it between a seven and a twenty-eight-day period, and what constitutes overtime is gonna vary depending on how you set that parameter. But I would say that that's gonna, you know, because we've got a constitutional officer who can establish personnel policies for his department, it obviously, what it's gonna be, what that policy's gonna be, requires buy-in. I don't think it's, I don't think it's as simple as saying, we'll just adopt a county-wide policy that will cover those employees who aren't under the heading of a constitutional officer in their department, but that's a fairly small universe of employees. Most of the employees we're dealing with, you know, obviously, our Sheriff's Department employees are under the authority of a constitutional officer, so whatever you set is gonna have to have buy-in.
But we, there is a law particular to law enforcement. Is that correct? As far as overtime is, and we, we don't have, we don't have any idea of what that says. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, that's not what I'm saying, no, sir. There is, the overtime is different for law, is calculated by the federal government as, they calculate it different for law enforcement personnel, certain kinds of first responders, because the emergency nature of their work. So they're not calculated like most people are, or let me put it this way, they're not required to be calculated like most people are on a forty-hour work week. As was said a minute ago, uh, it can be calculated on a scale, uh, of seven to twenty-eight days and what constitutes overtime. For example, as Commissioner Stevenson said, if it's a twenty-eight-day period, then if you work in excess of a hundred and seventy-one hours in a twenty-eight-day period, then, then you would, you know, trigger overtime. But, so I'm not sure if I'm, you know, I'm sure I'm maybe not communicating or not understanding your question, but what I'm conveying anyway is that what that standard is, is gonna be set, it's gonna be, have to be accomplished with buy-in from the constitutional officer which heads the department, which is the Sheriff, because ultimately, you know, he, that's just the nature, as y'all know, of Tennessee government. Different constitutional officers have the ability to set their own personnel policies. Now, obviously, everybody tries to get that done in cooperation and coordination. That's why your handbook has, for example, uh, 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 policies that are exclusive to law enforcement, because there are certain policies that are unique to the Sheriff's Office, and the handbook reflects that. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but I'm trying to.
Doug, do you want to, you have a closing?
No, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna reiterate, what, what Attorney Maroney had said. It's, it's basically in the handbook for law enforcement. Now, we have, we have some that says for, for the annex, where they're working twelve hours, they're working eight hours at the jail, but there's some discrepancy there on making it real clear if I'm saying that correctly. Uh, and we just need to clarify what, what we're, what we're doing. I mean, do you have any, any, any comment on that?
Well, Douglas, let, let, let me let...
I'm sorry.
Mr. White.
I'm just curious, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, I'm hearing from Commissioner Stevenson, what was that number again for the overtime?
The overtime right now, I mean, from what I, this is really rough numbers. I came up with, now, this isn't just at the jail, this is the whole thing, eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars.
And we're anticipating over a million then for the year?
I would, I would suggest, Barry, would, would you suggest that too?
We'll be close, sir.
Close to a million. And then I'm hearing that we, we're gonna have to have buy-in from the county attorney, from the, uh, Sheriff, and then you're saying the Personnel Committee, if they were to work, uh, get together with the Sheriff's Department, all that, all this kind of stuff to make sure that this happens, and we still need buy-in, I, I would like to know if we, do we have some kind of a commitment from the Sheriff that we could actually work with that? And he would work with the Personnel to get that changed and...
Let the Sheriff speak. Go ahead, Sheriff.
Let me speak with you. Doug talked about all this overtime. Thing is, in the jail, Captain Rutter, I mean, we were, what, fourteen people short?
Closer.
Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen people short.
That's not in the study, Sheriff, guys, because...
No, I'm just talking about, not studying, studying, we're fifteen over the maximum, the number we have, uh, short. So if you get there, you're actually up about thirty people short, but according to what required. Uh, but what has happened is since this, you know, if you got all of us, and we, we don't have anybody filling our positions, and we've been off for, off the job for three months or four months, that's salary savings right there. So what we've done is taken that money from salary savings and moved it to overtime to help pay for that. These fourteen positions, we have not spent their money. It stayed there, but we moved it into overtime. So that's where your overtime is short, and that's, that's a problem. But we're hiring people as fast as we can. And as I said, you know, we, we've got four, I've got an interview tomorrow, or tomorrow, I think, tomorrow morning, to hire for the jail. Well, the thing is, we just lost four or five.
Sheriff, I think, I think Tommy's question was, is there any, any possibility of you addressing overtime in a different way?
We, we will be glad, and Doug and I, we all talked and said, that said, we'll talk and see about the best way to do it. The twenty-eight day, I know how that works, because I was under twenty-eight day. I wasn't, but my men were, and we ended up with a whole lots of overtime in that twenty-eight day. If you get your numbers up and your personnel up to your facts, so I'm, I'm agreeable to work on a counter, even what possible, on a solution. I mean, that's, we don't want problems.
Who's next? Commissioner Petty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address, uh, Mr. Goble's question about the overtime, and, and there's been some comments made that people are taking advantage of the situation, let me kind of do a little quick scenario here for you to digest and for everybody to digest. If you've got, say you're an employee, let's just say John Smith is employed with, uh, as a correctional officer, and on his first day of the week, now, let's just say back three weeks ago, he put in for a day off on vacation, gonna make a three-day weekend on the end of this week. So that was done three weeks ago, was approved. So now that we're here to this week, at day one, he's working his eight-hour shift, and then because of the shortage of people, uh, you, but he's asked to work an extra shift, so he's putting in sixteen hours. Now, do we agree that if he's working sixteen hours a day, that eight hours is overtime? Do we agree? So there you go. There's, there's the problem. They do, okay? All right, then tomorrow, he's working his eight-hour shift, and then he's asked to work at the hospital tonight, that night, to sit on, on an inmate, so there's another sixteen hours. All right, then day three, he works his normal eight-hour shift. And day four, he works his eight-hour shift. Day five, he's taken, it's, he's asked for this day off, and he's gonna use comp time, because he has that right to use his comp time or vacation time. So, and he's gonna use comp time. So now, it's reported on the time sheet that he works thirty-two hours. He took eight hours vacation, or comp time, I'm sorry. He took eight hours comp time, and then he turned in sixteen hours overtime. And then the next week, he works all five shifts the way he's supposed to. So there's the forty hours. So we ended up at that pay period with seventy-two hours of regular time, eight hours comp time, and sixteen hours overtime. So now, how does that look to everybody? And let's just say repeats that the next one. Now you've got your twenty-eight days. So do they still get sixteen hours overtime? Does anybody agree with that? Or not? So, so now, with that in mind, you've got to think about how this time is reported. Then you think about the salaries for those fifteen people that were short. It's still in the bank. So we're converting it from salaries, regular salaries, to the overtime. He's got no deficit for overtime. You're talking about his high overtime. It's not gonna be a million dollars, because the mon, money is sitting in the salary account, and he's gonna be spending it out of there. It'll be appropriated on a different line item, but it's gonna be adjusted out of salaries. So we haven't overspent the money. You've got to look at the whole picture, and he'll be happy to explain it for you to go see. And if you want to see what happens in that jail and how dangerous it is in that jail, especially with the crowd we've got right now, go down there and spend eight hours. Go down there and spend eight hours. That's all it takes. Now, with all of that said, by law, we have to take care of the inmates. That's the reason the Finance Committee has put this one hundred and sixty-eight thousand back on the table. Guys, if you don't, you're going on record that you're voting no on taking care of the inmates. What kind of pictures is that thing?
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, sir.
Not to speak to the merit of the request, the amendment. However, we're not paying, hasn't due paid the teachers either. They have some issues. However, the personnel policies, and especially the last four years, have not made a big difference to amend it, or have not come into play with constitutional officers, we know that. So, quite frankly, I'm wondering what effect would it do to amend the personnel policy, because we had some debate, let's do it overtime, about rates, because constitutional officers would give a different raise than somebody else, so I really think this discussion is futile. Because the thing is, that constitutional officers sometimes do what they want to do, and they are empowered to do, to have control of the money they collect and things of that nature. So, the rules of the game doesn't give us a lot of opportunity to have anything other than opinions, and opinions really have bought me very much in my life.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Commissioner Ellison?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think we was on another issue here. This is a separate issue, what we got on the floor. Can we get back to our issue?
You ready to vote?
The question has been called...
The question has been called...
Second.
I saw the call was important.
Question has been called...
Commissioner Williams, Martin?
Oh, so, okay, let me get this fixed, I'm saying, you work eight hours, and somebody called me, and they asked you to work over eight hours. They're eight hours, overtime.
If you worked eight hours a day, and you are asked to stay another shift and work it up eight hours, would you want overtime?
No, I would think I'll be there for four hours.
We'll allow orders, but we have a conflict between each other then.
As I get four hours, and three days, then yeah, because the other two days, you can let me off unpaid overtime. But, what I see, it should be out for four hours, not eight hours, because I work eight hours. I should work four hours, and then, I get overtime. I think that was something that should have followed.
Commissioner Johnson, repeat the motion.
Your request is for additional funds for food supplies at the jail.
Hundred sixty-eight thousand. Roll call.
No.
Arnold.
No.
Beckham.
No.
Brantley.
Yes.
Brown Clodell.
Yes.
Brown Scott.
Yeah.
Bryant.
Yes.
Bush.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yes.
No.
Deaton.
Yes.
Ellison.
Yes.
Gobble.
No.
Hill.
No.
Johnson Arthur.
Yes.
Johnson Barber.
She won home.
Martin.
Yes.
Mercer.
Yes.
Montague.
Yes.
Pearson.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Spain.
Yeah.
Spearman.
No.
Stevenson.
No.
Taylor.
No.
Wall.
Yes.
Anybody want to change their vote?
Thirteen yeses, ten noes, one pass, one absent.
Thirteen yeses, ten noes, one pass, one absent, motion passes. You got the wrong number?
Did I hear wrong?
Let's see.
I apologize, Commissioner, if I don't hear well, I need a little assistance every now and then. I apologize, Commissioner, fourteen yeses, nine noes.
Fourteen yeses, nine noes, one pass, motion passes.
She voted yes.
All right, well, that's what I had wrong, I'm sorry.
Arthur, you finished? You finished?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is two more, as I understand it. I think Commissioner Mercer and Commissioner Stevenson both may have some due...
The press read...
These did not come before the committee.
All right, we need to suspend the rules?
I know that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? None.
Who's second? Pearson?
I don't have this one.
Which one, the recreation one?
The utilities of beach club.
If you might want to speak to that, I think you all have.
Right. When we did the budget last year, nobody was aware that there was the wastewater treatment plant out there until after the budget was approved. And one of the things that they talked about, when we discovered it, was to see if we could maintain it and pay for it out of our utilities budget. We were putting a septic tank in, the septic tank is in, the problem has been, it's not fully decommissioned, the wastewater treatment plant, because of the weather. The septic tank was put in before Christmas, but the ground has not been dry enough, and all this time to get a hundred percent done. But, for each quarter that was put in, or for each quarter, it was a little over five thousand dollars, five thousand six hundred dollars we got charged. Once the septic tank got put in, the state is still coming out there, but once a week instead of every day, and the bill is about a thousand two hundred dollars a month, that's what we get charged. So, that has shorted our utility budget. It's something we were going to have to pay, whether Parks and Recreation did it, or the county did it, whoever. And that's where we're, so now we're kind of stuck. We've used the utility budget for both the beach club and for the rest of the Parks and Recreation Department, and we're short. And hopefully, if the weather will ever cooperate, they can get the last loads of builders in, and that'll be overdone, it'll be decommissioned, there won't be the twelve hundred dollar a month charge anymore. But, when that, that's to guide, the weather clears up, because the heavy equipment has got to come in, it's...
Do we got a motion to approve this?
I'm trying not to make a motion.
How many dollars?
Thirty, thirty-nine.
I'll say.
Have a motion second, any other discussion? Who's second there?
I do.
Commissioner Petty? Anybody understand the motion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None. Commissioner Stevenson?
This one, this one right here is, we approved last month, we approved payoff early, five and a half million dollars, I believe, out of debt service, and this is just a amount of interest earned that we've earned on that. For what type of year was that, Mike? I'm sorry, I don't have that.
The story behind this, my tenure since I've been here, we've never paid off anything. Bonds were early, and I call them, this is supposed to be due the twentieth, I called them last week, said, how do we need to go about doing this? And they said, oh, you've got to give your bondholders thirty days' notice, and by the way, you still got to pay the interest on that, which is going anywhere from four and a half to five percent. Trustee Newman is getting approximately two percent during this timeframe, so this is covering a lot of it, and he is getting a lot more money in interest income than we had anticipated in the budget, because we borrowed from the jail. So, we've got enough money, so it's not coming out of our balance. So, we're taking some money out of interest earns to pay on this interest on bonds that we're going to have to pay, that we didn't think we was going to have to pay.
Need a motion?
I just need a motion to approve this, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, we have a second. Commissioner Petty, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None.
Mr. Chairman, this is just an in-house transfer, am I saying that correctly, in-house transfer for a hundred sixty dollars at the building department, from office supplies to credit data processing supplies. I'd just like to make a motion to approve this.
Have a motion? Have a second, but Commissioner Martin, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None.
What we're doing here, this is the last one I have, Mr. Chairman, is for motor vehicles. We've been discussing about, and Ray Washington brought this up, about some vehicles that they're leasing through the enterprise, and Jeff Clark would like to do the same thing through the building department. What we've got is, he can do that with the amount of money he's got this year for about sixteen hundred dollars, and then we're going to continue to look at, in the budgeting process, on some things that we can do to, I think we've talked about this, about ten to fifteen vehicles. So, that's sort of where we are for sixteen hundred dollars. I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Have a motion? Don't everybody speak at one time?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Bush?
Yes, you can. I guess, I ask, is this related to the resolution that we passed earlier about the leased vehicle for the building department? This is just a transfer to cover that, is that correct?
Yes, this is the, you passed the resolution, this is just the money we're covering.
Cover. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None. We're through with everything. Item number fourteen, election on all republics. Have a motion by Commissioner Martin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Petty, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? None. Item number fifteen, any and all matters related to or connected with matters set forth in items one through fourteen, Commissioner Gobble.
Attorney Maroney, how do we, all of our meetings are submitted to the public, is that correct? With the exception of client, attorney relationships.
Any meeting that involves deliberation toward decisions is open to the public. That's what the open meetings act means at this time.
How is the fact that the finance manager not open to the views of the finance interviews with the finance manager, how is that not open to the public?
Because those, as I understand the manner in which those interviews are being conducted, there's no deliberation being undertaken, those are simply information gathering. The interviewee, I don't attend those, but my understanding is the interviewee attends, has asked questions, relates answers, but the committee that has been created to handle the, I guess, a recommendation ultimately to the finance committee, they do not and have not deliberated toward a decision. The Open Meetings Act covers meetings which are designed to deliberate toward a decision. So, if an interview, and I understand some of these folks who have interviewed, you know, for purposes of, and I guess we've all been there, when you have other positions, you don't necessarily want to go through and interview publicly. But, you know, whatever the reason is, that someone may want it to be private, it's my understanding that some have expressed an interest in it being private, and there's not a requirement that those be open, because there's not a deliberation taking place. Now, if you interview the interviewees, and then say, okay, thank you, now, what did y'all think about this one, what did y'all think about that one, now you're deliberating. That has to take place, and I understand that it will take place at a future date, but that has to take place in an open meeting.
So, will those take to be published before?
I mean, I'm not in charge of arranging for that, but I assume they will be, they should be. There should be, there should be an open, you know, notice, just like with any other, you know, committee meeting that takes place.
This is probably a bad time to bring you up, but this is time that we normally borrow ten billion dollars for school system projects going on. We normally do this around April first, which I've had planned for. I didn't plan on this time, and I talked with our financial advisor, and you do have a resolution in front of you, giving me authorization, go ahead and borrow this. Can I get this money borrowed for about a month to six weeks? So, I'm asking for, this is something that does not have to be done immediately, but to go ahead, and there's several advantages for going ahead and doing it now, but I'm asking you to go ahead and give me the authority to go ahead and get the ball over, to borrow this one, if it's on board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, to give the dog a borrow of that for schools.
I'll say.
I'm going to motion to suspend the rules to consider this.
We have to suspend the rule, yeah. Is that your motion?
I'll make, well, yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Have a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? None.
The motion is to pass this resolution, Lord Paul. The motion is to pass this resolution.
Yeah, the motion will be to pass this resolution. Do you have your package?
Yeah.
Have a motion by Commissioner Mercer, have a second by Commissioner Petty, any discussion?
Can you repeat the motion, Mr. Chairman?
His motion was to pass ten million dollar bond resolution for school.
I only had to scan this resolution, but I saw nothing in there that specified the projects that the money would be used for, and I want to know whether it's going to be used before I vote for it.
Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, forgive me for that error.
So, yeah, we had outlined, and as I mentioned earlier, the roof at Nova, which is over thirty years old, was not a part of the study initially, because it was closed, and we traversed Whitehall School to Nova. So, Nova's roof, the roof at Alexander's school, and the North Side North roof is the last roof of the roofs that are over thirty years. There is a roof that is under thirty years, which is Liberty Tech High School, which is estimated at one point six million dollars, but because it's not as in bad shape as the other roofs, we're hoping that that will be significantly less. So, Nova roof, North Side North roof, Alexander roof, and HVAC.
Do you have an estimate?
Estimated total right now is nine point three, but we're working through this, and it may be less, because Liberty's roof probably will not be the one point six million dollars, hopefully that's anticipated, because we can do a coding process versus a total re-roof, which we've had to do on the older roofs, because the damage has been prolonged for so long. So, hopefully, we can come out less on all roofs going forward, if we don't let them get out of control like we had in the past. That's what we're working towards.
Commissioner Johnson?
I know that we amend the motion to say that any holdings above what's spent on these roofs goes into their capital projects, and it comes back to us to approve before it's spent.
I second.
Have a motion second, any...
I just want to clarify, you're voting to approve a resolution that's been prepared by the Mr. McNulty's firm, so if you're going to amend this, and we need to be, you know, this is a finished document, so I don't know what that does to your timetable, but we will have, what you have to approve is this, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do the project, that's a policy issue, but if you elect to do it, what has to be approved is a resolution specifying all this. So, if you're going to do something different than what's in here, we need to get another resolution.
Oh, I'm not, I didn't move to amend the resolution itself, I... I, strictly the money act, we did.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's clear, because I think the motion on the floor was on the resolution, I just wanted to make sure.
You gotta get another motion. This is a resolution, and then it's...
Can we, can we approve the resolution first and then take his motion second?
Sure.
What was it? Go ahead, Mike.
Just to answer, Commissioner Johnson, might as well do like you've done in the past. We can take the money borrowed, put it in fund balance, and then as projects come about, you make the money, make the transfer out of fund balance for each individual project.
So, we voted on the resolution, that's our vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? You, who said no? Doug? Do you wanna make, does TD make a motion on? You wanna make a motion on what Mike said?
Go over how we have it forward.
You didn't appropriate any of the bond proceeds going to any specific project, so it fell into fund balance automatically. Then when projects came up, you removed those from fund balance, you moved them to specific projects. So, you can do each individual roof if you want to.
I move that we approve the projects as a time of.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Compton. Commissioner Taylor?
Just one thing, Mike, we mentioned today, if for some reason in the next few weeks we decide that we don't wanna do this, we don't have to borrow the money, do we?
I don't think we have to borrow the money. But I was thinking about those things, we might be on the hook for bond council, the rainy agency fee, they might be on the hook for that, I don't know.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Commissioner Stevens? Anything else for tonight? If not? Have a motion to adjourn? Second. Roll call.